Thank you.
Good evening, welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is the Thursday, April 4th, City Council Regular Session for the Community of the Year. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jensen.
Here.
Mr. Harper.
Here.
Mr. Miskin.
Here.
Mayor Abu Osley.
Here.
Ms. Menzer. Mr. Brant.
Here.
Mr. Sterned.
Here.
Thank you. This time we have a moment of silence. Thank you. First couple items on our agenda this evening are two proclamations. The first one is for National Library Week. And Councilmember Miskin is going to present that one. And would you come forward, please? Thank you. We have members of our library team here to accept the proclamation.
Feel free to stand there. It's a good week, National Library Week. Whereas libraries offer the opportunity for everyone to connect with others, learn new skills, and pursue their passions no matter where they are on life's journey. Whereas libraries have long served as trusted institutions striving to ensure equitable access to information and services for all members of the community regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. Whereas libraries adapt to the ever-changing needs of their communities developing and expanding collections, programs, and services that are as diverse as the populations they serve. Whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that promote a sense of local connection, advancing understanding, civic engagement, and shared community goals. Whereas libraries play a pivotal role in economic development by providing resources and support for job seekers, entrepreneurs, and small businesses, thus contributing to local prosperity and growth. Whereas libraries make choices that are good for the environment and make sense economically, creating thriving communities for a better tomorrow. Whereas libraries are treasured institutions that preserve our collective heritage and knowledge, safeguarding both physical and digital resources for present and future generations. Whereas libraries are an essential public good and fundamental institutions in democratic societies working to improve society, protect the right to education and literacy, and promote the free exchange of information and ideas for all. Whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now therefore, I, Gage Miskin, on behalf of Nicholas Abu Osley, Mayor of the City of Marion, Iowa, do hereby proclaim April 7th through 13th, 2024, as National Library Week and encourage all residents to visit their library and celebrate the adventures and opportunities they unlock for us every day. Ready, set, library.
We would just like to thank the city for all the support that you continue to amaze us with because we could not do it alone. Thank you for your help.
And thank you to our library board and library staff for everything that you do to make Marion such a standout community. That library is truly, truly a gem and an asset for the region, so. Okay, I'm reading a proclamation for Fair Housing Month. And we have Renee from the Civil Rights Commission here to accept it. Join me up here. And I just, before we read the proclamation, you know, I just want to say that we're really proud of the progress Marion has made in providing housing for all people of all backgrounds and making this a place where everyone feels like they belong and where people have the opportunity to live in this community and to contribute their best to the community and to have the opportunity to take advantage of all the great things that are happening here and to have a great quality of life. And as the city has grown, we've expanded the housing opportunities for more people and we expect to continue doing that and making Marion a leader in that way. And at the state of the city, one of the things that I announced was that Marion is number four in the nation for affordable housing in Wallet Hub's survey of 1,400 cities in their survey of America's best small cities. And so we're very proud of that and we continue, but we hope we continue on that path, so. The proclamation reads, whereas April 2024 marks the 56th anniversary of the passage of the U.S. Fair Housing Act, Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, commonly known as the Federal Fair Housing Act. Whereas the Act sought to open doors of opportunity and eliminate discrimination in housing and to affirmatively further fair housing. And as we celebrate the 56th anniversary of this historic legislation, we reaffirm our commitment to ensuring that everyone has equal and fair access to housing. And whereas fair housing assures individuals have the right to choose where they live without discrimination based on age, color, creed, familial status, gender identity, marital status, mental disability, national origin, physical disability, race, religion, source of income, sex, and/or sexual orientation. And whereas in Marion, we want to be recognized as an open and inclusive community that is committed to providing fair housing and advocating for equal housing opportunity for all residents and prospective residents of Marion. And whereas Marion's elected officials encourage all residents and community organizations to celebrate the value of harmonious and diverse communities and support the goal of fair housing for all people. Now therefore, I, Nicholas Abu Osley, Mayor of the City of Marion, Iowa, do hereby proclaim April 2024 as Fair Housing Month and encourage the residents of our community and communities across the country to support fair housing. Got a picture over here. Thanks, Renee.
I guess I will say one thing.
Go ahead.
I'm kind of excited to announce that at the commission, we are having our very first Fair Housing Event, April 24th. And the media release which just went out yesterday, it's going to be at the Marion Library from 5:30 to 7:30. We're going to be featuring a topic of service animals versus companion animals. And we are going to have some different housing agencies within our community to service people in Marion and so that more people can be exposed to those agencies. And they're all champions of fair housing and affordable housing as well. So I'm inviting all of you to attend. Thanks.
Thank you. At this time, we have a public forum, which is a time set aside for comments from members of the public on any topic that is listed on the agenda but not associated with the public hearing. If anyone is here to address council on any topic that is not on the agenda, there will be a time for that at the end of the meeting. If anyone's here to adjust the council at all this evening, we ask that you keep your comments to five minutes or less and refrain from repeating anything that's already been said by another individual who's spoken. And we ask everyone to please be respectful, keep your comments on the topic that is concerning you and not disparage individuals, and also fill out the card for the city clerk. Okay, is there anyone here to address council on any topic that is on the agenda but not part of a public hearing? Please come forward. Okay, seeing no one's coming forward, we'll close this part of the meeting and proceed to the consent agenda. Mr. Brant?
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as follows. Items A1 through F1, Resolutions 31867 through 31882.
Second.
We moved in second to approve the consent agenda as presented, including items A1 through F1, Resolutions 31867 through 31882. Any discussion? Okay, we'll vote. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 24-04 designating an area of Marion, Iowa, as the 2024 multifamily housing urban revitalization area. This will be the second consideration.
Second.
It has been moved in second to approve the second consideration of ordinance number 24-04 designating the 2024 multifamily housing urban revitalization area. Discussion? Hey, all those in favor of ordinance number 24-04, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. At this time, we have a public hearing on a proposal to enter into an essential purpose loan agreement. Public hearing is now open. Do we have a presentation?
Yes, hi there. So this is something that we talked about with the CIP process. So this ties into the capital improvement program that will be coming forward for adoption at the next council meeting. This is our annual GEO issuance for the needs in that capital improvement program. We need to split this into three public hearings because they are dependent on the type of the project and the purpose. And so this public hearing is for the essential purpose part of the issuance. And what's on the screen here is the total issuance across all of the purposes. For the essential purpose, that covers the first three projects there on the screen. So you'll see that's the pavement management program, the Central Plaza, and the Albernate Road Extension.
Okay, thank you. We'll come back to questions when we get to we get to the resolution, so. Okay, the public hearing is open. Is there anyone here to address council on this measure? Please come forward. Well, ask the clerk if we received any comments outside the meeting.
We received one comment in advance of the meeting from Tim Gordon. He wrote, "In opposition of loans to be repaid through taxes and opposition of expensive projects, since there's an increased cost of living."
Okay, Brian, did we receive anything through your department?
No, we did not.
Okay, thank you. We'll note that for the record and we'll close the public hearing. At this time, we have another public hearing on the proposal to enter into a general purpose loan agreement.
Yeah, so this is the same assurance. These are classified as a general purpose loan agreement. This is for the park construction for Dulstil and the Lucor Road pedestrian bridge on side path projects.
Okay, the public hearing is open. If anyone is here to address council on this measure, please come forward. Again, we'll ask if we received any comments outside the meeting on this item.
I have not received anything else.
And we did not.
Okay, please note that for the record and we'll close that public hearing. The next public hearing is on a proposal to enter into a C-Mar Trail loan agreement.
And this is specifically for the C-Mar Trail for Phase 5 for the $700,000. And so I just wanted to note that all of this is set in the maximum amount that the city would borrow. Then the next steps in this are the preliminary official statement will be drafted, which is the offering of the financing, which would show the breakdown of the bond issuances. And then there would be the moving forward to sign the loan agreements. And that would probably take place in May. And then we're still with the timing of the projects, we would be targeting to close maybe sometime in June.
All right, is that clear? All right, the public hearing is now open on that item. If anyone is here to address council on that measure, please come forward. Okay, again, we'll ask the staff if we've received any comments outside the meeting.
I have not received any.
And we did not.
Okay, please note that for the record. We'll close the public hearing and we'll proceed to the resolution.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 31883, taking additional action on proposals to enter into loan agreements, combining loan agreements, and providing for the levy of taxes to pay the same.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second to approve Resolution Number 31883, taking additional action on proposals to enter into loan agreements, combining loan agreements and providing for the levy of taxes to pay the same. Now, discussion or questions? Anyone? Okay, seeing that there are no questions, we'll take the vote. All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 31883, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve Ordinance Number 24-05, adopting amendments to Chapter 163 of the Code of Ordinances relating to flood damage prevention, the 2024 FEMA flood insurance study, and the 2024 FEMA flood insurance rate map. This is our second consideration.
Second.
It has been moved in second to approve the second consideration of Ordinance Number 24-05, adopting amendments to Chapter 163 of the Code of Ordinances regarding flood damage prevention and adoption of the 2024 FEMA flood insurance study and the 2024 FEMA flood insurance rate map. Discussion? Yes, sir.
Yeah, Jake, this is for you. How many properties are involved with this concern with this particular coverage from FEMA?
I do not know that answer.
Okay, but it's a relatively small number if I remember correctly.
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, okay, all right. Thank you.
Councilman Harper, I believe that's 33 is the answer you're looking for.
Any other discussion or questions? Okay, all those in favor of Ordinance Number 24-05, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. The next item is a public hearing on amendments to the Marion zoning map for revisions to 13 properties in the city. We have the presentation, please.
I have a short one here. With the completion of the zoning map updates, 21, 22, over time, we've identified a few properties that were left off or a few properties that have been further subdivided and got out of sync with the zoning map. This is just corrective measure that you'll probably be seeing once a year, twice a year as we go through the 15,000 parcels and as they change once in a while. Currently, the map on the screen shows all the parcels. There are several smaller parcels in there. It's, again, totals up to 13. This is existing zoning. Most of these properties are detention basins or city-owned property that was acquired as part of the trails. Water Department acquiring for the city, the Lucor Road property. And then again, just some corrections as part of some splits. The changes, again, bring most of them into the ROS, which is our recreational services zoning district. And the remaining properties get a designation that reflects the actual use of the property in the future. Most notably, the SR2, which will be incorporated into the Jacobs Landing plan that was just approved a few weeks ago. Planning and Zoning Commission heard, had conducted a staff or a public hearing last week or two weeks ago and recommended approval.
Great. Thank you, Dave. At this time, this public hearing is open. If anyone is here to address council on this measure, please come forward. Okay, did we receive any comments outside the meeting?
I have not received any.
I have not.
Thank you. Note that for the record. Seeing that no one is coming forward, we'll close the public hearing, proceed to the ordinance.
Mayor, I move to approve Ordinance Number 24-06, amending the Marion zoning map regarding the revisions to 13 properties in Marion, Iowa. And this is the initial consideration.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve Ordinance Number 24-6, amending the Marion zoning map regarding the revisions to 13 properties in Marion, Iowa. Discussion? Questions for staff? Okay, seeing there are no questions or discussion, we'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor of approving Ordinance Number 24-06, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. Next item is a public forum, which is a time set aside for comments from members of the public on any topic. And again, we'd ask that you, that people abide by the guidelines that were noted previously. So anyone here to address council at this time, please come forward. Yes, this is the public forum time. So yeah, if you please come forward and speak in the microphone because the meeting is recorded. And if you haven't filled out the card, if you wouldn't mind doing that after you're finished, that'd be great. And to state your name and address and proceed. Thank you.
Okay. I'm Brad Beechel. I live down at 255 8th Avenue in Marion. I wanted to bring some things to the council's attention. I spoke with Mr. Jensen here a couple of weeks ago. This might ring a bell with you. The other work that we're doing down here with 8th Avenue, widening the road, all the sidewalks, and all the work that you want to do. I spoke with Todd, that was one of the contractors coming through, and I didn't really get too much of a straight story of everything that was going on. So I've kind of dug a little deeper into this. I spoke to Mike and I've spoken to Steve Jensen about what I got going on. So basically, what I have is in this block for your proposal, there's two houses, being my house and the house that's next door to me in particular. And the other two houses are on the block are impacted by this that I don't think anybody has seen how this works. But if you go clear up to 31st Street on 8th Avenue and drive all the way down to Blair's Ferry Road, of all of those houses on that whole 8th Avenue, everyone has access to the front of their house for this sidewalk proposal. My home and the little red house that's next to me, I believe it's 287, and mine's 255, I don't have access to the front. We have walkout basements. The front yards are elevated. My personal house, I bought in August of '05. I've done a lot of work. I've about doubled the square footage of it, replaced about everything that I can on it. I had big dreams of putting up a pretty good garage out back. And what I have going on here to explain how I got a I don't know. What I'm trying to get to is, I have a large driveway. My front of the house is my back of the house. I have a garage that comes out the back. I got a two-stall wide driveway that goes to the whole back of my property. I have a turnaround area on the corner of it. As I leave my property, I go to an alleyway. I access my home, not off of 8th Avenue, but off of 3rd Street by Wells Fargo. And there is an easement, an alleyway that goes through there. And I maintain that, not only my whole driveway and everything that I have for snow removal, I maintain it out to the road behind my neighbors, behind the next property line that's out there, clear to 3rd Street. And the only way I'm going to have access to get to the sidewalk is to have to go up all the way up 3rd Street at Wells Fargo's parking lot area, all the way across Wells Fargo's, my neighbors, and then to access mine. So basically, what I'm asking, I hope that somewhere along the line, we can change something up on this because this is going to be extremely inconvenient. For me, it's going to be a lot more work. I have about four hours of snow removal to typically do on a nominal to decent snow. And if you get a wet pack snow, I'm going to be at it a lot longer than that. I have a demanding job in the winter. I work 10, 10 and a half hour days, six days a week. I'm at work at 6 o'clock, so in order for me to do that kind of snow removal, I'm going to be violating a noise ordinance. Or I'm not going to have to have time to do my snow removal for the sidewalk. So either way we go, this creates a huge hardship for me and a lot of work. People get lazy when it comes to doing their snow removal. So more than likely, I will end up doing everybody's snow removal just to get to my sidewalk. And I don't think that's fair to me. Out of two houses, out of the whole deal, I get it, we want to put sidewalks in, make everything, you know, except, make everything so everybody can get where they want to go. But however, what this is going to do to my household is not really a cool deal. There's no way I can get any equipment up there. And I'm not going to do this with a shovel. I've already done this before. I have a lot of property and a lot of snow removal. So that's probably not going to work. So we're going to have to work, find somewhere around about this to either amend putting your sidewalk through on that fourth house side of the block. You're going to have a eight-foot wide. We're adding on to the road there. And then you're going to have six-foot of grass space, so we're at 14 feet, and then a five-foot sidewalk. So we're also going to put traffic up in my yard 19 feet. It's not a safe place for that. So if anybody has any questions and would like to sit down and kind of walk over this, there's a lot to kind of eat up on what we have here for this as well, to kind of wrap your head around this. The other issue that I have is, and I wanted to bring it to the attention of the development side of this, 7th Avenue is elevated. 8th Avenue is elevated from our backyards. So is 3rd Street, and so is 2nd Street. So I live in a collective dish for water. We have a small drainage tube that goes under 2nd Street. And I know they were talking about putting another tube or something under there. I was hoping maybe we could do something that's a little more redundant than that. They were going to put a grate over it. My concern with putting a grate over it is if we have another duratio-type storm and that grate would collect the debris and probably plug that thing to its full capacity and it would fill our whole backyards and back that up into our basements where we're at. So I would hope that we could look at doing something a little more thorough than just a tube with a grate under the road that's down there, especially being it looks like the road's going to be pretty well tore out, widened.
Sir, you're five minutes.
And we're going to be past, you know, that part of it. So thank you. Anybody has any question?
We appreciate your comments. If anyone has questions, maybe we can, they can speak with him after the meeting. Go ahead.
Just a comment. Again, I did talk with Mr. Beechel a few weeks ago and we had a very good conversation. I did tell him, conceptually, I agree with the purpose of the sidewalks and also told Mr. Beechel, I completely understand the challenge that he's going to have with snow removal on his front sidewalk. I did reach out to Ryan Waller and ask him to consult with the staff if there's any other ideas that they may have. And I think one comment came back from Seth, at least at this time, if you could pass your comment on so that's, so Mr. Beechel's aware of that as well.
Yeah, we did look at the, so we did look at that as, you know, if, we looked at it as an option if we could.
Sorry, Seth, I don't mean to interrupt you, but is this, is this okay discussion, city attorney? We don't want to violate the open me- We don't want to violate the open me.
Right, I think it's probably okay for Seth to share the information, but there shouldn't be any back and forth.
We, yeah, we just want to avoid deliberation or any kind of.
I'm not trying to do that.
Go ahead, please, Seth.
Yeah, we looked at it from an operation standpoint, if that was something we, we could operate. We, we, with the additions of Alberta Drive, we would be taking a plow truck. So our equipment really doesn't operate on the four-foot sidewalks. And so it would be something that we would have to go manually shovel to. And one, we have a lot of other properties such as this, so it opened, it does open the door to, to having to go shovel those other properties and we just don't have the manpower to, to do everything in, in, for other residents such as this.
Okay, thanks Seth.
Thank you, Seth.
Okay, is there anyone else here to address counsel on any other topic? Please come forward. Okay. Then with that, we will proceed to counsel comments. Steve?
Just two quick ones. Like everybody else in the city, I think we're very grateful to get the two inches of rain that we've received this week and looking forward to cheering on the Iowa women tomorrow night.
Yeah, just one item, your honor. I'm kind of pleased that it's, we're kicking off National Library Week. I'll be at the library on Saturday morning, nine to eleven for council, open office, council, open office hours. So anybody listening in on the recording, stop by.
I'll also say, go Hawks. And then on, I brought it up on Tuesday, but then on Saturday, the thirteenth
at the library.
In the community room, the city's putting on an event called Green, Be Green at Home. And so from two to four, it's, if you wanted to come up and hear about rain barrels and, and conserving water at home and I think landscaping and trees, planting trees. And I think the water department might be there to talk about water conservation. So just want to be green at home. Stop on up and learn. That's all.
Ready?
Thank you. I just wanted to correct myself and I apologize to everybody. Item E one, ordinance twenty-four dash oh five, the question was asked how many policies and I, I misspoke and said thirty-three. It's actually eighty-three. So my apologies, there's eighty-three flood, flood policies in, in that area. So I just wanted to correct that for everyone's listening. That's all I have. Thank you.
For my part, again, congratulations to everyone on the groundbreaking of the, of the plaza. It's going to be exciting watching that take shape over the next year. And I thought that was a very successful event. We had a huge turnout and it was a great, great celebration of a lot of work that has already gone into it by, by a lot of people and just a testament to what we all can accomplish when we work together and we dream together. And it was a fun event and it's going to be even more fun when we open it to the public and, and cut the ribbon. So great job, everyone, on that. Since the state of the city, we've had some real great interest from developers across the state who are interested in becoming, being part of our momentum here. And, and so we've had some really good meetings with some developers who want to explore opportunities. I've had a chance to do a abbreviated state of the city speech for a couple of groups and I'm sure there'll be more. And that's, that's about it for me. Thank you all for all your hard work. Keep preaching higher. We'll see you next time.